Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our first board meeting of January 8th. It's nice to have a full house with family tonight and happy things happening. We are very, very happy that Mr. Kement is with us tonight after his heart attack a few weeks ago. And we're all gonna try to be real gentle on him from now on so we don't cause him any more trouble. So if you would please stand and Mr. Kement's gonna lead us in the pledge.
I think we should have the kids here every week and do our pledge for us.
It sounded real good, you guys, real good. Mr. Franciscone is excused tonight. His mother passed away in San Marino, so if we could have a moment of silence for here, please. Next is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of December 17th. Any motion, please?
Make the motion to approve the minutes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. This is school board recognition month, and I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Lukey.
First of all, all of you, is this thing on? Thank you very much and welcome. Before I forget, I'd like to thank all the parents, the kids, the teachers, the principals. Everybody had something to do with bringing a group or individuals here to recognize people tonight. This is the one time in the year when we take a few minutes to acknowledge people that don't get a lot of money, but most of the time, a lot of grief. So what we're gonna do is we're gonna have these individuals come down one at a time, and we have the schools that are gonna do just a little something. Remember, this is not a contest. This is to have fun. And as I've said many times, we will do the older kids first because they're not cutesy, and then it's hard to follow those, the little ones, okay? First of all, Mr. Headmark's gonna come here on behalf of the Principals Association.
Well, on behalf of the Principals Association, we'd like to extend our gratitude and our thanks to the board for the support that we're given. This is truly a wonderful place to work, and there are very few opportunities to honor the board such as we do tonight, and we want to take full advantage of that. To that end, we did have boot neers for every board member, and they are on their way, but my guess is that my delivery principal, Mr. Crowe, is trying to find a parking spot. So perhaps we'll pin you with the flowers at the end of the meeting rather than interrupt as we're going along. So know that by the end of the meeting, you'll have a pretty flower to wear as well, and it's probably a rose. On behalf of Roseville High School, since we get to go first and avoid being at the end of all the cutesy, speaking of cutesy, I was gonna be joined by a couple cute officers from the Honor Society. They could come up here. Our president and vice president. And I was told by one that he wasn't going to speak, and I was told by the other that she couldn't read my handwriting. So therefore, I'm speaking and they will present. It is our honor and fortune, good fortune, to honor Mr. McCartney, board member, and on behalf of Roseville High School, in recognition of your years of dedication as a board member, parent, community member, and student in the Roseville schools. We have a special memento for you. It was created by one of our airbrush artists at the high school, Brandon Tregembo. Sophomore Brandon Tregembo created this, and you will see that it represents the years you spent at Braeblech and now the years that are spent representing Roseville High.
Airbag over there.
Well, this is, this is great work. It's quite an honor, and I am extremely proud to have been a member of Roseville all these years, my entire life. And also proud to say that I've raised all three of my great kids in Roseville schools. Drew's the last one here. He'll be making his way out a couple more months. I know you're looking forward to that. I am too, actually. Please pass my thanks on to the rest of the class. Thanks, guys.
You're welcome.
All right.
Come down so Joey can get them all in.
Ms. Green, Patton Elementary School's here to honor you this evening. Tonight, we have Ms. Pantelio and our first grade students here. We have a gift for you at the very end and everything, and we really appreciate everything you do for us. So without further ado, I'm gonna turn things over to Mrs. Pantelio, our first grade teacher, and our crew of boys.
You're lucky tonight to have all of our gentlemen in our class.
Thank you for all that you do. You came to the classroom very lucky. We're glad that you are here. We couldn't do without you, that's for sure. And so we say that we appreciate you just because of you.
Nope, not yet.
Thank you for all that you do. You came to the classroom very lucky. We're glad that you are here. We couldn't do without you, that's for sure. And so we say that we appreciate you just because of you.
Ms. Green, we really appreciate the opportunity to thank you for all the wonderful things you do for our community, and we'd like to invite you to come read for us for March's reading month. If you do that for us, we appreciate the times that you've come in the past. We'd really enjoy that.
We hope so.
And this is for you.
Thank you.
Again, thank you so much for everything that you do. And I'm gonna let the kids introduce themselves and say who came with them today. Your name is?
Yad.
And who came with you today?
My dad.
And your name is?
Ashton.
And who came with you?
My mom and my dad and my brother.
And your name is?
Elijah.
And who came with you today?
My grandma and my dad.
Your name is?
Darius.
And who came with you today?
My grandma.
Jack.
Who came with you today?
My mom, my dad, and my brother.
And your name is?
Brady.
And who came with you today?
My mom and my sister.
And your name is?
Mashawn.
And who came with you today?
My dad and my brother.
And this is?
Calvin.
And who came with you today?
My mom and my sister and my brother.
And this is?
Nathan.
My, um, dad and my mom.
Very good. And your name is?
Mohammed.
And who came with you today?
My dad and my sister and baby brother.
And what do you guys all have to say to Ms. Green? A nice thank you? Ready? One, two, three. Thank you!
I'd just like to say thanks to each one of you. I'm probably the oldest one on the board here, but you guys make me feel young. So I will be there on reading month. You can look for me. Thank you so much.
We decided to come up because we are cute. We are cute. All right. Where's Adriana? Come on up here, honey. Okay? You ready? Okay. This is for?
This is for?
Black pins?
Black pins.
That you?
That you?
Use?
Use.
To do our budgets.
To do our budget.
And they always turn out?
And they always turn out?
In the?
In the?
Black!
Black.
Thank you. Okay, give them his pens.
When the meeting goes too long and you just need something sweet, you can pick some candy or better yet, a picture of Mr. Johnson.
Now that's a keepsake.
When you need a break from your daily routine, stop by Kement and share a story with us. We thought we would share one with you tonight.
Beautiful. Bring it with me in March.
All right, you are welcome anytime. And we want to make you official tonight. So you are an official Wildcat.
Wildcat.
Wildcat, bring that with you. And this is a bag you can use when you go to the beach or your lunch. Your choice. Yes. And we just want to say to you and to all the board, thank you for everything you do. And what's wonderful about our board here is you're not just board members, you're friends. And we say thank you. Wait, 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 wait.
My mom and my dad.
Adriana and my mom and my dad came with me.
Jaclyn, my mom and my dad and my sister.
And I, Wayne, I came by myself, but I'm glad to be here. So thank you.
This is always one of my favorite nights. You know, we have a couple throughout the year, but to have these kids come up and present this to us, and as Matt said, I mean, born, I was actually born in Detroit, but lived in Roseville all my life, went through the Roseville schools, and went to the real Roseville High School. And my three kids, my three daughters, all three of them went through the Roseville Community Schools. So keep up the good work, and we'll see you then in the month of March.
Well, we have a little song prepared for you today to thank you for being a part of our district and for being on the school board. So I'm gonna turn it over to them, and then we have something to say to you after.
The world is a rainbow that's filled with many colors. Yellow, black, and white and brown, you see them all around. The world is a rainbow with many kinds of people. It takes all kinds of people to make the world go round. Now you'll be you, but I'll be me. That's the way we were meant to be. But the world is a mixing pot. Just look what happens when you stir it up. The world is a rainbow with many kinds of people. And when we work together, it's such a sight to see. And as an additional thank you, we have a small gift for you.
Thank you very much for all you do for Roseville schools. Joe?
Thank you!
Joe? And the kids need it. Oh. Wait, Ryan. Wait, come back. Come back, they want to know your names, guys. Boys and girls, come on back. All right, ready?
My name's Mackenzie.
My name is Tyler.
My name is Brandon.
My name is Ryan.
My name is Anna.
My name's Angelica.
I'd like to thank everybody for doing this tonight. This is one of the best nights, as my fellow board member said. And this is a joy to see all this. And I'm really happy that everybody's here and I can be here for this. And my wife is here tonight, and little Joey's back there, and he's gonna be going to school here in Roseville at Door Elementary. And I went to school here my entire life. And I also graduated from the real Roseville High School. Okay, thank you.
I'm from Steenland Elementary School. Thank you to all of our board members from all of Roseville. We appreciate it. And you're here to honor Miss Janay tonight. I have Mrs. Barnum here with me, and she has...
I have Mrs. Barnum here with me tonight. She's a teacher at Steenland Elementary School, and she has come up with a little performance to honor Mrs. Janay. And this is Mrs. Barnum over here. Well, talk about pressure getting the president of the school board. Well, we were so excited, and we were equally excited when our theme for homecoming was "Seuss," because we took our favorite Dr. Seuss song and we put a little spin on it so that it was all about the amazing Mrs. Janay.
That's okay, it's on tech cable in two weeks.
Edit that part out.
Negative.
Are we ready?
Thank you very much. Well, again, we can thank you. As you can see, you do so much for Roseville, and you have for so many years. We are so honored to have you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I would like to introduce yourselves. All your pictures. Thank you so much. You did such a great job. Beautiful, beautiful, beautiful. I would like to all to introduce yourselves.
We need the mic, Ms. Green.
I have it right here. Can I grab that mic behind you? We have one over here. Do you want to start here? All right, that's okay. You wanna start here? Introduce yourself and who you're with.
Hi, my name is Caitlin, and I'm with Ms. Gruet and Ms. Shackley.
And your mom.
And my mom.
Hi, my name's Hannah. I'm with my mom, my dad, and my sisters.
Hi, my name's Riley. I'm with my mom, my dad, my brother, and Kristen.
Hi, I'm Kaylee. I am with my mom, my dad, and my sister.
Hi, I'm Chloe. I'm with my mom and my dad.
Hi, I'm I. I'm with my mom and my brother and my teachers.
Hi, I'm Nicole. I'm with my mom, my brother, and my teacher, Ms. Shackley and Mrs. Gruet.
Hi, I'm Brianna Sains. I'm with my mom, my dad, and my two sisters, Ms. Shackley and Ms. Gruet.
My name is Trudy Packett, and I'm here with my dad's friend, Steve Gatto, and my sister.
Hi, my name's Dakota, and I'm here with my mom and dad.
Hi, my name's Olivia, and I'm here with my mom, my, my mom, my grandma, my grandpa, and my sister, and with my two teachers, Ms. Ms. Shackley and Ms. Gruet.
My name's Chloe, and I have my mom. I have my mom, my grandma, and my grandpa, and my, and my sister.
Hi, my name's Nina. I'm with my mom and with my two teachers, Ms. Shackley and Ms. Gruet.
Hi, my name's Hannah, and I'm here with my grandma, my mom, my papa, and my little sister.
Hi, my name's Autumn, and I'm here with my great-grandma.
Hi, my name's Tyler, and I'm here with my mom.
Hi, I'm Zane, and I'm with my mom, my grandma, my, yeah, my dear.
Hi, I'm Navante Williams, and I got my mom and my cousin.
Hi, my name's Emily Brack, and I'm here with my mom, my mom, my brother, and my sister.
Hi, I'm Brianna. I'm here with my mom, my little brother, my best friend, and my two teachers.
Again, let's just give Mrs. Janay a huge round of applause. You wanna turn around so the board can see all your faces? Turn around maybe to the board, too.
Nice job, guys.
Thank you all very much. This is why we do what we do, because of these children. I mean, they just make us laugh. They make us laugh. Thank you so much.
My name is Lori Kinsch, and I'm principal at Kaiser Elementary. And on behalf of the students, the parents, and the staff at Kaiser, we are, first of all, delighted to be here to recognize all seven of the board members, and we certainly appreciate all their efforts. And then most especially, it is our honor to recognize Mr. Greg Scott as one of those board members. And I have our kindergartners and teachers, Ms. Shemke and Ms. Mondro, here to do the honors. Here's a jar of pie. Here's a jar of pie. Here's a jar of pie.
I am Autumn Van Damme. We feel that you uphold these same purposes, making you an exemplary school board member for Roseville. They are: scholarship. Mr. Francis Coney creates enthusiasm for scholarship. He is dedicated and encouraging in finding students who can further their education beyond high school. He works passionately on the Roseville Scholarship Committee to recognize and honor students who have earned academic requirements, service, leadership, and character to receive scholarships. Service: this quality is defined through the contributions made by Mr. Francis Coney to the schools and community that must have positive, courteous, enthusiastic spirit.
Leadership: exemplary years like Mr. Francis Coney are those who are resourceful, good problem solvers, promoters of school activities, idea contributors, dependable, and persons who exemplify positive attitudes about life. Leadership experiences can be drawn from school or community activities while working with or for others. Character: Mr. Francis Coney upholds principles of morality and ethics. Is cooperative, demonstrates high standards of honesty and reliability, shows courtesy, concern, and respects for others, and he maintains a good and clean lifestyle. We present to you this honorary certificate and National Junior Honor Society t-shirt.
Mr. Francis Coney, we would also like to make you an honorary member of our very passionate and active green team at Eastland Middle School. Our team is grateful for the support that we get from our school staff, parent club, and from you and the rest of our school board. We participate in fun educational activities that are good for the environment and promote energy efficiency and savings. Please accept this bag along with this framed verter as tokens of our appreciation. Thank you, Mr. Francis Coney.
We really appreciate it.
And I think all of you are exemplary board members, so thank you for all of those purposes.
You need to introduce yourselves. My name is Miriam, and I came here with my mom.
I'm Autumn Van Damme, and I came here with my dad, who wanted me to say that he is an honorary Brae-Blick graduate.
Also, we just want to mention that our condolences go out to him and his family and his loss. Thank you.
I know Alfie will really appreciate that. He's into the environment, and he is a scholar. He needs this coffee to get going, but once he does, he is very bright. So, thank you from Alfie.
Okay. We have a little rose for you.
Okay. Mr. Laffive?
Yes.
If we could ask Mr. Schumer, if you know Mr. Schumer, he usually has hair. And we found out, wanted to find out what happened, we understood he lost a bet. So if you could explain that bet, we'd appreciate that, Mr. Schumer. I heard it's on YouTube.
Actually, I am on YouTube, and our building had some MEEP goals in reading and math. And students and staff have been working very hard. And we did, we met our goals, which are some pretty significant increases in reading and math scores. So my challenge to the students was that they would get to shave my head. And so they kind of botched it a little bit, but it makes for good humor. It is on YouTube, I think Principal gets head shaved or something like that. Blake was there, he had a front row seat, I think. But, and they left a couple tufts there, so it was pretty ugly, uglier even than now. But it was well worth it. So congratulations to the students and staff. And we were able also to give away six brand-new Kindle Fire HDs to students who improved their MEEP scores or had the highest MEEP scores combined that were donated by my sister and her husband. So we appreciate that from them too. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we have a recess, we're gonna ask for the comments from the Board of Education members. I know they all want to say after all this, it was wonderful. And, oh, we have, oh, sorry, Ms. ...
Before we do that, Ms. Janay, could the Principal Association present you with your flowers?
Absolutely.
And we promise not to stick ya.
Oh, shoot. Hey.
You shoulders are out.
Mr. Gentle.
I don't trust this. Not gonna pin it on me.
Oh, thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, very pretty. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Do we have to put it on? Do they be recognized before the break?
Mr. McCartney, you're on.
Well, every once in a while, as a parent, you make a mistake that you're never gonna live down. I forgot to introduce my beautiful daughter Shelby, who is also with us tonight, and a Roseville graduate. Thank you, everyone, for coming out. This is truly what we look forward to, and we appreciate your support. Again, I'd like to thank the parents for coming out and bringing their kids, the grandparents, aunts and uncles, the staff. I know on the second day back, it's tough, getting the routine, but we appreciate it. And I brought my wife with me tonight, or the wife brought me, I don't know which. She's in the back. Thank you.
Okay, I get to speak again, because I forgot my two sisters over there in the corner, and they sit and cry through the whole thing, so I try to ignore them, because then I see them crying, then I cry. But thank you for being here tonight. And my son Joe in the back's videographer, and he's gonna have this on in a couple weeks, Joe? Okay, thanks. Ms. Green?
I'd like to say thanks to everybody. It's very rewarding to see the kids come out and contribute to us. I think they're one of us up here, enjoy what we do. We love the kids and the staff, and thank all of you for everything, and thank the parents for bringing out their children tonight.
Kevin?
Ditto's to what everybody else has said, and I just meant a little clarification. When they presented Ms. Janay and said 13 years as a board member, they were off a little bit on years. It's probably all that frills and stuff on you that made you look younger. But she's actually been on the board for 25 years, so congratulations and thanks, Teresa.
Thank you.
Thank you all, parents, for coming out, the kids especially tonight. Our shadowing partners that'll be with us next Monday. You know, this is one of the spectacles of our year that we look forward to every year, so thank you for coming out, and let's have a great 2013.
Mr. Joe?
They pretty much said it all, but I've gotta touch on a few things too. It's great to see all the parents getting involved, and all the staff, and principals, teachers, everybody coming together to make this happen. And I'm proud to be up here, because we have a good district. We have the best district in Macomb County. And also, I'd like to say, the last day of school, I was over at Fountain, and Ms. Bucci had a packed house over there. And I couldn't really get in to see the singing and the kids and everything, but it looked like a great time over there. Thank you.
Mr. McCartney?
A lot has already been said, and I want to thank all the parents that are involved. A school district is more than just bricks and mortar. It's a community that works together. And thank you, parents, for sharing your young people with us tonight. We appreciate it. And please support public education every chance you can. Seems like everybody wants to take a shot at our teachers, our principals, our schools, not only here in Roseville, but in the other districts. And what makes a successful school district are a combination of the board, the teachers, the principals, and you, especially the parents, and of course, the students.
Ms. Vaisal?
I have nothing to say that would top what's already been said. You just, you make all of us feel wonderful on a night like this. Thank you for your effort.
Mr. Dinning?
Tonight, the recognition of the school board and the mock school board meeting are two of the most fantastic nights you can spend in this boardroom. Very nice to see all the kids in the presentation. I really appreciate you.
Thank you. I know, I feel like we have to charge entertainment. Maybe next year we could do that as a fundraiser, you know? So the great show tonight was great. Mr. Massey for Mr. Steenland tonight.
I'm not Mr. Steenland, I'm Mr. Massey, so if you thought I was, I'm not. You'll be representing John, who's not here today, he had some surgery done. The kids were awesome tonight. I'm glad I was able to be here for them. I'm thankful for being here, very nice.
Ms. Laffive?
Nothing, enough said. I'll get myself in trouble if I say anything else.
And Ms. Lynn?
It is a great night. Thanks, everybody, for coming, and I want to show my appreciation too. Thank you to the school board.
And we want to congratulate Lynn, she got engaged over Christmas. I hope it's not a surprise. Congratulations. Okay, now that we have that done, I mean, the first public hearing. Does anyone from the public wish to be heard at this time? We have a public hearing now, and we have one at the end of the meeting. So we ask if you'd like to come up to the podium and say a few words, we'll let you do that. No? Maybe I'll said it all, huh? Thank you very much. We're gonna have a recess now for a few minutes. I mean, I know you have to get home with your children if you want to stay for the meeting. It's exciting, but if you have to leave, we understand. Thank you so much again for everything.